Thank you. Jelani, will you introduce our students tonight?
Tonight from LT Vol, we'd like to welcome students representing Mrs. Bergen and Mrs. Moore's pod. Joining us tonight to register in the pledge is Anna Brownlee, Jackson Robin, Jeffrey Martin, and Rachel Wong. So if the four of them come up front, come face camera and face flag, and the rest be wolf's throats, right?
(audience) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Stevens, can you call roll, please? Mr. Spata, President. Mr. Denton, President. Mrs. Dahl, President. Mrs. Dunaway, here. Mrs. Edwards, President. All Presidents, count them, sir. Thank you. First item on the agenda is a committee report, and it's our Miami Valley CTC. And we have Mr. Frank Maust here, who is Board Number Four of the district. Here, can you give us a little report? So Frank, take it away.
Okay, thanks, Ian. Yeah, I got four items, three of them are real quick, the other one may take a little time. One is there's two camps coming back that are open to high school students, if interested. One's on Ramtech, which is a beautiful facility. They're both in June. I'll leave you the information then for it. The other one's STEM Camp, and these have gotten good reviews, if anybody's interested. It's open to all the students in Tiff City and the other schools that feed into Miami Valley CTC. And the other item is that, right now, they are in negotiations with the union for the next year contract. It should go smoothly, but right now, that's going on. And did you guys get a...
We got a PowerPoint presentation attached to ours. I don't know if they have it available for the Chromeboard or not.
It doesn't matter. But basically, yeah, there's four slides. The first should be the timeline that you have there. This is for the new Miami Valley CTC facility. They're calling it the largest school renovation in the history of Ohio school system. It is big. It's $130 million. A little bit on the history on it, December, they did a traffic study, the environmental studies for that area. Are there any Miami Valley CTC kids here by chance? Okay, yeah, the traffic is an issue there. The OFCC application and other municipal applications were done in January, February. The underwriter was selected for the bonds. Those are the people that kind of really just sell the bonds to help finance the building. March, there were some agreements on the project. And now we're in the April, May, June timeframe for that. And the bonds did go to auction. I was surprised at the interest rate on them, and there's various ones, but it's 3.75%, which I thought was really attractive. It's a municipal bond, so there's, you know, for people that live in Ohio, there's no state taxes on it and no federal taxes on it. So I did question myself, you know, was that too high? But the other side of it is, not all of them sold. They're still out there, you know, if anybody wants to buy them, they can. They're still out there, so even at that high interest rate. And just now, we did select Garvin Miller for the architects for the program. They are starting in on the design of it. And then the next thing is selecting the contractor, which should be done in about a month or two. That's basically it, unless you have any questions or anything. You should start seeing, maybe the next time I come up with an update, there should be some rent rates, if you guys want to see that, you know, of the facility. It will look good. The OFCC part of it is going well. Again, it's renovation, so it's not like they can say, hey, these classrooms are too big, or anything else, and they really can't limit the money on it or anything like that. It's a renovation. So that gave a lot of flexibility. It probably would not have been, you know, if it was a new building, it probably would not have gone to OFCC, but with it being a renovation, it really, you know, there's less involvement from that. But the involvement we have with the state is going smoothly, so that part is going well.
How long is Dr. Woldy's contract?
It'll be up, and it just was renewed for five years, so three and a half years, three years.
Oh, sorry, how long's he getting in?
Let's see. Three and a half years.
Okay, he's just done such a phenomenal job over there, and it seems like he's been there longer because he's done such amazing things. But I knew he was relatively new. I just, I think very highly of him, so I just wanted to see how much longer he got on his contract, so.
Yeah, it was just renewed.
Good, that's good. For five years, that's great.
Yeah, and...
He's an asset.
Right, and there was a significant, let's say, compensation increase for him.
Great.
You know, because, you know, he was new at it when he...
Yeah, he was.
You know, when he first came in, and now he's getting the point, and he's getting interest from other CTCs as well. So with that, the board felt that, you know, a longer duration contract, as well as a compensation increase, would be in order, so.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, because he has such a reputation, and you want to lock him in because he's doing such amazing things over there, you want to keep him. So that makes me happy that he's got about four years left.
Yeah, and, yeah, some of his accomplishments. One is he, I want to say...
Well, Ramtech, wasn't that?
Ramtech.
Yeah, Ramtech was a huge one that he did.
Yes, and all the funding for that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, which is a real benefit for the area. Do you guys even know what Ramtech is? Regional automation and manufacturing technology. We're one of three spots in the Ohio area, and it is, well, basically, some people say was, you know, cases, you know, what he wanted to show off as far as if he ran for the presidency while he did run for the presidency. That's one of the things that he was proud of, you know, in his campaign, and have continued to do. But it's a beautiful facility. But that was certainly one of his accomplishments. He redid the curriculum, got basically rid of some unpopular things, and replaced it with, you know, things like EMS training things that have really worked out well, you know, for the students, you know, in places where they provided, you know, well compensated jobs. So that was a big thing. Right now, he's going through reorganizing the administration structure, you know, which is a big thing. But one of the things also is he turned around the adult education program. Yeah, which, that was a, and it's kind of tough to quantify, you know, something like that. If there were classes in here tonight, you know, how much do you charge for the rent for that classroom? It's, you know, a lot of it is considered free, but, you know, there's costs to it. But it turned it around from being very unprofitable to, you know, being able to kind of hold its own.
Yeah, and that's one of the, hasn't that been two years now? I think this is the second year of the adult portion.
As far as it turned around, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has he just started out last year adding classes?
Oh, it's been going on for a while, but it's just been...
He's always picked up.
Yeah, and that was something the board really stepped in and said, something's got to be done by it, because as taxpayers, you know, we want to pay for educating high school kids. Well, when that was not, you know, profitable or holding its own, then all of a sudden, taxpayers are paying for adult education. Well, that's not what, you know, that's not what taxpayers are expecting to do. So it was a case of, it either needed to become something that can stand on its own, or it needed to be done away with. So we challenged, the board challenged that to happen, and he was able to keep that adult education program going. Anything else?
Thank you, Frank. We appreciate the update, and we look forward to future updates.
Yeah, probably be the summer with you guys.
Yeah.
Take care.
Do we need the brochures?
Oh, yeah, thanks.
I would definitely want to see them. Thank you.
There you go.
Great.
All right, next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
All right, we're going to start off with some information about kindergarten registration. I have Mrs. Barton, Principal of Lemon Coffee Elementary, Mrs. Tate, and also Mrs. Bean. So I'll just let you share information.
Well, we, okay, we have, we had a little slide, but basically, we've had, we've changed a little bit of how we do registration, so you can, I'm sure you guys talk a lot about things at the high school level and kind of preparing our kids, but really, the first step is getting into school. And so we start at our building with that process, and so we've worked on, we worked on, pretty superheroes on there, the pictures, you know, something like a good superhero in the building. Anyways, we worked really hard, Carrie's done a lot, to set up online registration, that info snap that everybody in the district fills out at the beginning of the year. And what our kids did this year, instead of coming into the building and filling out paperwork and then going back to do online, they did online first. And we actually ended up with a lot more completely registered by the time they came in. The other important thing, I think, is they each got an opportunity to meet one-on-one with one of our secretaries in the building. So they came in and had that kind of personal touch to set up all the different things they needed. So very different from kind of the mass flood into the building, wait in a line, wait for your items to go be copied in a secret spot, you know, worry about your license slipping down or something like that. It was very personal, and I think it was a really positive change. We offered time before school, after school, and during the day for a whole week. It helped us really avoid problems right away. So I think it was really effective. I think you would probably agree, we had a lot more registered online instead of having to make phone calls. I think last year, we had to call like 101 people to do the online registration. This year, they're already all in, so we're really set. So every person that comes in, that's the very first thing they do. That's the way we want it to be. We want it to be streamlined and a fairly simple, personal process. But we also were able to set up their spring screening appointments. And, you know, I did bring Mrs. Bean and Mrs. Tate because they are truly our experts, you know, and I think it's important that you guys see them and see the people that they represent in the building. I can share some things, but they've taught kindergarten a lot longer, and they've got a lot more insight into what our kids need to know and what that's like. They also sat down with their team and redid screening to some extent as well. And so I think it's just, I wanted them to be able to share a little bit, and for you to hear some of, you know, the very first entrance into school and what we do, so I hope you guys can stand then, I guess, and share a little bit, too.
Yeah. Stand right over here if you want.
The first chance the kids really have to get in our building is when we do our spring screening. And that gives us a baseline as to what they know, what they can do. It helps us when we build our class list to try and balance the classes. It also gives the kids an idea of where they're going for kindergarten, so that all summer, when somebody says, oh, you're going to kindergarten, they go, oh, yeah, I know what that looks like, not, oh, I have no idea what kindergarten is. So it gives them a time to be there. They separate from their parents for a while. They get to meet some of the friends that they're going to be in school with, and it just gives them a good, positive first experience.
At spring screening, we also connect with each family, so as the students are reintroduced to their parents, we talk with each family about things they can continue to do to prep over the summer, to prepare for the best success of start to the school year. And so we take that as kind of our first step and our bullet block, and then go on in the fall and do several things to help continue to make that connection with the students and with their families. We have first of current orientation that we house here at the high school, just really just for parents, like nuts and bolts information, how home reading works, what to do if your child's sick, how the bus stops work, those kind of things. Then we also have our open house, where each child gets to come with their family. They get to take pictures, they get to tour the building, they get to meet their teacher again, find their lockers, see what door they'll come in, all the things that by the time you get to this building, you take for granted, but five-year-olds are anxious about, and we want them to feel successful about. And then we have our fall screening component, which each child meets with their teacher. So in the spring, while they get to meet all of us, in the fall, they get to spend one-on-one time with their teacher when we complete the state prepared assessment. But in addition to that, we reconnect with that family and that child, so that by the time they get to us on that first day of school, we really address jitters because they've been with us four or five times.
How many are you projecting in role in this community, and how's it compared to previous years?
We have right around 170 currently, and I would say that fluctuates some. We have a few preschool students who still, who are, we have a couple additional coming in. And I would say, we are, especially when we started scheduling for screening, we were quite a bit ahead of where we were last year number-wise, so we had at least about three more commitments for our great screening that we're on with you. So, very good, yeah. They do a great job. I mean, if you come there, you see it, they know what they're doing.
Great introductions.
Thank you both very much.
All right, our next one is math curriculum, we want to have a discussion. We have math curriculum and maths that you have, and so I'll just pass this down. I know that the attachment has come out, but this evening, the attachment you have is actually our slideshow. I personally want to introduce our people, and this is Mrs. Tate. Kim Barbour, she's just going to stand right up here. Mrs. Sowry, first grade, Mrs. Sowry, if you'll stand. All right, Mrs. Hampton at second grade, representing. Erin Jackson, Mr. Jackson. We have Erica Brogan, Meredith Snyder, Cassie Shaw, Krista Owen, Jenna Halling, Nancy Murray, Allison Worcherts, Kevin Knappke, Dan LaBott, as well as Adam Tucci, and Amy Grisca.
Okay, you're visiting tonight, okay, all right. All right, so thank you all. They worked very hard on this, and there's more work to come, because next month, we're hoping to have the suggestions and the recommendations for actually the publishers and the vendors for the free materials. But this evening, they're going to have a PowerPoint presentation and just talk about each of the cluster areas and what they're doing with their curriculum area in mathematics. So we're starting with K through three. And so we have Mrs. Tate and Mrs. Sowry, just going to begin. And in our next group, if they just kind of want to be on the side of Q, that would be good.
So when we met as a K to three grade band, and kind of thinking about what we were hoping for through this math program, looking at different programs and through the change of our math curriculum, we really thought we should start with our vision, what we wanted for the youngest Tiff students in the area of mathematics. So the things that we kept coming back to, the four big areas that we kept seeing were that we wanted kids to be confident in math, we wanted them to enjoy math, and then we really wanted them to be able to discuss math, problem solving, and how they arrive at their answers, and then to develop a foundation of numbers sense, because we really saw our role as K to three to building the strongest foundations so that kids can grow there.
You just have to touch it, yeah. There you go.
You go first, Mrs. Bergen. There we go. So looking, using our vision to kind of guide us about what we wanted. We wanted to look at programs that helped create just not math doers, but math thinkers and math talkers, so kids who understood math and could talk about it. And we really looked for programs that included test opportunities that were more challenging, so not just rote knowing facts, but being able to apply them. And we really thought it was important for students K through three to be able to explain their math in their writing, so be able to talk about it and then also write about it. And then we looked for programs that allowed kids to apply their skills and concepts in a variety of situations. So those were the things that we really used as our driving force in K to three.
Tap.
Tap.
Oh, you went too far.
Three taps there. See what I'm saying?
There we go. Okay, all right. So some of the evaluations that we did to look at the programs, the first thing we did was we piloted a program for the entire year, which was the Hope and Ethical Go Math Program. So that gave us some really good insights into that program. We attended the vendor fair in Pickwa, where there were many, many programs and other Miami County teachers there evaluating programs and discussing. We had representatives from the programs come and visit us, and we were able to ask them questions, and they were able to troubleshoot some of the programs we had. We also had the program that we piloted, we also had year-long support from her online. We would ask her questions, she would answer us back and try to troubleshoot those, also give us links to tutorials of product technology and even virtual sampling of the program, which was helpful. Mr. Segura was very helpful in creating a Google document that we used that was kind of ongoing, that we would add and discuss questions among the team, too. Both of those things were very helpful in evaluating programs.
And then I speak for four or five. I'm Erica Brogan. Just to build on what they said, the Go Math program that we were piloting, we had used for the last seven years anyway, we were using that same program, but they had upgraded to a lot of new online technology, new pieces. So we were semi-familiar with the program, but what they had to offer us was, it's pretty significantly different than what we were using before. So that's a good build. We kind of found what we were doing, but then were able to add to that. And just building on what Carrie said, too, we see in grades four or five, the work that they're doing in K three. We, since we started using the program, we hear new vocabulary, we hear the language, they know what our expectations are. They're definitely thinkers better than I've ever seen. We just want to provide a strong learning environment. We're looking for efficient and fluent students. We had a lot of conversation about that not being the same thing. Working really hard on being fluent doesn't mean memorizing, but using our resources. And confidence, that's really big at our level. We have a lot of people think they can't do math, and they find out they can when they're given the resources. And just lifelong learners. We do all of our problems and all of our standards start with a problem of the day, instead of just the computation of it. It's word problems, so it all starts with a real life, some of them are silly, but figuring out real-life things that could happen. So common vocabulary was huge. We see all the way from kindergarten, they start using the words that we use in fourth and fifth grade, the real-world problems. And one thing that was really helpful for us this year with our professional development is our third-grade teacher, our fourth and our fifth, all went to the same conference, and it focused on multiplication and division, which are huge for all three of those grades. And we got to see the build, you know, where it starts in third, where we are in fourth, and then where it ends in fifth, or continues in fifth. And having all three of us there was great conversation to be able to evaluate our new program, too. Are we doing everything that we need to do in this to flow where it needs to be? So, it's good.
Are we got any questions?
I think we're going to get the area.
I have a question about first grade.
I'm Cassie Shaw, senior teacher at the middle school, I do elementary and sixth grade now.
And I'm Crystal, and I'm Jenna, sixth grade, including sixth grade, and I co-teach one gifted class.
We first started by looking at the ed reports to determine the series that were out there that were on the top of the list, and we looked at the standard that we were looking at. So we identified Go Math as one, as well as Serica Math and some others when we went to the vendor fair. We both have previously taught at LT, so we were very familiar with Go Math, so we're excited to try that at the middle school, to have a common language, kindergarten through eighth grade. And just knowing the depth and complexity that Go Math offers, we feel that that's something that our students really need at the personal as well. The online piece was a huge key thing for us to use, especially with geometry and statistics, letting our students see things online and be able to manipulate them.
And it's been very exciting watching, I've come from first grade to fifth grade to sixth grade, and our current sixth graders are the first class that have had Go Math from first grade. So it'll be interesting to see where that group goes in another six years when they graduate, when we reflect, it'll be almost time for another curriculum where the high school staff can inform us, hey, we have seen a turnover on the vocab and the application, the critical thinker. And we're trying to create big thinkers, big problem solvers, is where we're kind of angling as well. What else do we have there? I think we covered it. The other teachers covered most of it as well, but we're excited. We're learning a lot about the online piece each, every week, her and I are like, okay, how do you pull this up, or what can we use with this data? How can we apply this data to what we're doing? How can we improve? So...
Just the resources to your parents. I think a lot of ways that we're approaching math is different from how we potentially learned it when we were in school, so there's different resources for parents to pull up and see as well, which is great.
And I think the elementary and LT, they're kind of breaking that hole, too, because they're seeing vocab returns, like, we didn't all fly like that. I'm not going to take you that way. They need the exposure to it, because that's what is going forward, and all the other people. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Adam Tucci, math intervention specialist.
Allison Worcherts.
Dan LaBott.
We did, we had a lot of really great experiences, and got to test a lot of cool things this year, and to try to see what we want to do, looking for, you know, our vision, you know, along the line of what we think, you know, I think these last two things are huge. Once they get to our level, we want them to be independent thinkers, you know, they have a problem, they, we're trying to get them to be adults, they need to kind of figure it out more to figure it out themselves. But critical thinkers and how to apply skills. We have people with so many, like, skills, and then it's like, where would I ever do that? So part of our job is to do that work. Here's a great time. So that was a lot of what our pitch is for. This is kind of what we put together. I was at the two at Pickwa and Speedway, we went to observe some different things. Pike Township was a really interesting one. In Speedway, we got to see a curriculum that we ultimately decided to not choose, when we went there and saw. We were really interested in, and I think it was a good thing to, for us to be there and see and feel it was so similar to what we're doing now, and we're trying to find something that's more of a difference in how we instruct as opposed to the curriculum and content. But we did do some surveys. We surveyed former students, I think we asked them stuff from Rice State PGSE. So here's what some former students are saying, remember this stuff, send your teachers nice emails when you graduate. So, just kind of selling that to, we're preparing kids well for college, is what we're trying to say. Kind of what our next step is, our next step, what's what our present students want to go for. Our next step is to do, how are we preparing kids that don't want to go to college, that want to go to a CTC or go into the workforce? So we're trying some new courses coming, so I love that we changed, we're calling it Algebra One now as opposed to like Core Algebra One. I feel like, oh, your Core or your CP. Well, CP's College Prep, it's like, oh, your Core. So we're just going to call it Algebra One, is what we're calling it. But it's going to be intensified, is what I think the curriculum we got is. It's two periods, back-to-back, it's going to be co-taught. I'm excited to be co-teaching this as well. Algebra One is like the foundation, like if you struggled in Algebra One, the half of geometry is like, remember Algebra One? And then like half of Algebra Two is like, hey, you remember Algebra One from two years ago? So we're really trying to hit them hard with that, and get some struggling learners to a spot where they can use those skills and find out ways to apply them. So we think that this is a different approach. We're also piloting something right now, and this porch is a nice class, it's an online program called Alex, which does the content, but also does remediation at the same time. It kind of learns what you know, and then it can help fill in some gaps. So we're really excited to do that. The other one we're looking for is math applications. It's a senior course, and it's trying to get them like, okay, you will use this in life, you need to know how to, this is a, like, balance your checkbook, right? Like, you can't spend more than you make, we need to start learning that. Okay, everybody got that, that's you. It's a lot of those things, credit cards, cars, you know, hey, miles per gallon, what is, you know, what is that MPG? We see that, what does that mean? So trying to use those different things with them to really apply the things we've learned in the past to things that, you know, happen naturally or things that they're going to see in the future. So that's kind of our new offering, so I'm going to try to hit back. Hold on. Slide name? Here's what students right now are saying. Everybody's got something. Hey, this is one super wild thing we keep continuing to hear over and over. Those math teachers were like, if we can fit thirty-five problems, you know, in eight font on that page, you're getting thirty-five problems. And a lot of the places in research that we, we saw was really cool, it was like, okay, if, you know, if we got thirty-five questions, if they can do five in a row, eight in a row correct, why do they need to do thirty-four? And we were kind of like, oh, yeah, that seems, alright, okay. So it's actually our Alex, what we're doing right now, the online program, it's like, okay, if you get, you know, it's got eight total questions, but if you get the three right, first three right in a row, then it says you've mastered the skill. So we're really taking on to that approach and listening to what our students are currently saying. Not taking it easy on that one, but just trying to figure out, hey, what's the right mix of repetition and also, you know, master.
The only change is that he mentioned earlier, this is where the intensified algorithm is coming in place, where the kid can tap Algebra One back-to-back periods. Oops. And the second change gives our students another option for that fourth math credit year within the math applications course rather than the pre-calculus course. Sometimes that can be a little too rigorous for some of our students, which is another option for them. Obviously have the option of taking pre-calculus still, but it's nice to give them four electives. Next one's the electives?
Yes.
These are some of the classes that go beyond what's required for the four math credits. We have a semester course, which is Intro to Statistics. And we also have the other semester course that allows students to take for a full year, these two back-to-back, Intro to Calc. And then we have two AP course offerings with AP Stats that I teach. And then AP Calculus is the other option. But with this, the objectives, then we can, or some of the objectives.
That's your last slide. Alright, I think we are ready for questions. Thank you very much. Alright, questions?
Yeah, I had one. Sorry to put anybody in the spot, it's not intentional, I'm just going with whoever favorite presentation. So, sorry, Mrs. Brogan. When you were talking about your, your slides, you mentioned the Go Math, but it's also going to have some changes. So how will the district train you and do you feel like you'll have the needed support? You ready for your fall classes?
We actually talked about that at our, some of our current training that we have, and they have a huge variety of offerings. So, they offer things typical grade level, grade band, whole school type thing, or they will also have like the teacher coaching where they will come into your classroom and maybe watch how you typically use their resources and use the lesson, and then they will sit with you in a later time, one-on-one, and talk about what you could do instead or in addition to. That was really appealing to some of us. Some didn't feel they were interested in that, but it was definitely a different level that we weren't expecting that was available to us. Now, nobody talked cost for any of that at the time, so I don't know what you will have.
I just want to make sure, it sounds like a great program, I just always want to make sure that we're training the staff.
I will say that we, with having the last two years where we piloted that, we're a new part to that and it's kind of our responsibility to carry that on. And we've started that the first year, we started that a year ago. So it, it will get there, but it's definitely going to take some training.
Right, I just wanted to know how big the learning curve was, that's all.
It won't be huge because of being familiar with the program and the standards. You know, like our standards have changed, it's mostly just the program itself, so there will be some, I wouldn't say there's a speed up.
So is this a Go Math from like K through twelve? Is this the same series?
I think we're looking at take eight.
Take eight. And then nine through twelve, did you guys just pick whichever books?
It's at different sources.
From different sources. Oh, but, but K is, is Go Math? Is that what they've been doing currently in sixth, seventh?
The middle school is using Glencoe.
Oh, okay, so this will be a big change.
It's easily new.
And then will you guys be trained the way that?
We will, as well, yes. And they also offer, which we don't have now, we offer six A accelerated seventh grade Math and seven A accelerated seventh grade Math. And Go Math has books that actually cover those courses. It tells you all the six and part of seven, as well as part of seven and all eight for our seven A class, which is a nice bonus to have.
As you were saying, we're kind of, it's not really common for our whole district, we kind of bought in like that and that works really well for us. Like we said, when we first started meeting with the curriculum team, to hear what they knew and all the way down in kindergarten, that helps us. And other districts, I mean, I just, I'm Troy, it's only other district I speak of, but they just aren't as fluid like that. So that's very helpful.
Right, I think it, I think it will help a lot too, especially as we look towards hiring that ninth grade position to kind of help close those gaps that were forming that continuation of the same curriculum. We'll hopefully build better math and thinkers.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank the briefing committee for being here this evening. And if you'll wait just a minute so you can see our new hires, but after that, you're welcome to leave. But at this time, we also have four new people that we're bringing on board later in our RMP this evening, and so I'd like them to have an opportunity to introduce themselves. Nick Albers, please stand up.
Hi, I'm Nick Albers, I'm the new business teacher here. I'm from Polwarre, Ohio. I went to Ball State University and graduated in May two thousand seventeen with my bachelor's degree in business education. And I'll graduate this July with my master's in business education. And my family that I brought with me, my brother-in-law and niece, they walked up there. And then I had my mom, my sister Brittany, my brother Derek, my dad Roger, and then my girlfriend Brian.
Awesome. Glad you're both.
You guys all drove into Polwarre?
Alright, and this is me.
Hi, everybody. My name is Vanny Bailey. I am a biology teacher for the high school next year. My background, my undergrad is environmental science and I have my master's in secondary education. I taught for two years down the road at Milton Union and then fourteen years at Kettering Fairmont. And then my husband got a great opportunity in Columbus the last four years. So, I've been guest instructing at various districts there, also spending a little time working on my life center at Integrate Science, and probably just worked on my other dream jobs at the Columbus Zoo and Aquarium and Education Department. So, but I'm anxious to come home, my family's from the area. I brought my husband Brian, my daughter Caitlin, my son Connor with me tonight. Our family's here, so we're really excited to be back to the area and so excited to be a part of the team.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Caitlin George. I would be a new Go Math teacher. I would be graduating from my university on this day from both from Ohio. I brought my parents with me, so I'm excited to be here.
Alright. Hello, everybody. My name is Austin Haddon. I recognize a lot of people from here. I grew up in Tip, I've lived here since I was like two years old. So everybody, I mean, I kind of got a feel for how the district works. I'm super excited. It was great, obviously a great night for me to come, you know, to see all this stuff of math. And I'm, you know, kind of like an unconventional teacher, so I really like, you know, to like do things more hands-on. I really like, you know, kind of the new way of teaching math. So I think that's really good, I think it's going to work well. I have brought my girlfriend Jessica, my grandparents in the back, and my brother's here, he might not be here for me, but he's here for school, so I'm very sure as well. But thank you and I'm very excited to be here.
Alright, thank you very much. And so I say congratulations and we will have a resident issue later in the meeting to address. Thank you for seeing our new candidates. Enjoy your evening and let us get our ice cream served.
This isn't over.
This isn't over.
It's not over.
Sit down. Far from over.
Far from over.
Far from over.
I'm not kidding you.
They're fine, okay. What time are you thinking? Do you know what the trees replaced? Pretty sure.
Hi, I'm a resident educator now and I just want to highlight a little bit about that. Our resident educator program is part of the Ohio's Department of Education to support community teachers. It's a career program. Right now we have nine teachers that are in the fourth year and they have just completed their requirements and so they will be moving to a five-year license. So that's exciting for them and us as well. We have four that's in a third-year program, two in a second-year program and two in a first-year program. So, it's underway and they've been working on it all year. Third-year program is the rest of the program. That's probably the most intense year, a lot of video taking and reflection, one, the work in the classroom and then responding to that extended response. But we are going to have a celebration on actually May second, that's next Wednesday, at the board office from two forty-five to four thirty for our resident educators as well as the mentors and the administrators. And it's just really thanking each other for the support of bringing our young educators along and helping them feel supported as their learning develops in the classrooms. So that's just an update. Any questions on that? We're fortunate, we do our program in-house. And so our mentors are both, and we see the type of a certificate and tape that they are qualified for, and then we do a near amount of meetings to kind of help keep that support and that drive on going on to meet the state departments. Next item, strategic planning. Just a couple highlights here. This really is kind of looking at some of the things that we've most recently done. We had a workstation on April the eighteenth and that was with our strategic planning committee that we're now referring to as our student committee, which happens to be our board members and our co-chairs. At that particular evening, we outlined the process, or had that process outlined for us by our consultant of Dr. Jane Godfrey from Wright State University. We heard reports from each of our four pillars and there was discussion of where we are as a district and what our next steps are going to be. I followed up with a conference call with her on Friday, on April the twentieth, and we discussed further steps to be taken to prepare for a co-actored survey that will be given to our administrative team on May second. And then we began establishing a timeline for the direction between April the twentieth all the way up to May twenty-second. That's a pretty aggressive timeline, but it really kind of helps us with our pace and our next steps. And then Dr. Godfrey prepared handouts and next steps for subcommittee, and she sent that with about four attachments. Initially, it seems a little overwhelming when you open it up, but what I'll say is, each pillar has its own handout. So essentially you just need to focus on one of those as our subcommittees. And I know that that's been sent out, but if you have questions, make sure that you direct those back to Dr. Godfrey or myself as well, and I'll try to help and assist with that. And that's where we are right now with our strategic planning, excited to have a consultant on board to help us through these next very important steps.
Have you come by seeing in the Friday board update about a power meeting? Are we ready to set that date?
I think it was the fifteenth or the twenty-second.
I think that's right, thank you very much. I did not have that in these notes, but that is correct. We need to look at and we're trying to find which two dates would work for our district board.
Is that right, May fifteenth, May twenty-second? Am I remembering that correctly?
I think that's right, it goes both fall and Wednesday. Yeah, maybe. Tuesday, Tuesday evening.
Yeah, they're both Tuesday.
Tuesday evening. Is there a preference, one of the latter?
Yeah, fifteenth or twenty-second. If, yeah, that would be fine.
Which one?
Were those her only two dates?
Those, but those were the two that she offered and I, of course, we will be a telephone conference, so I'm not sure what else might be available, but I said I, I knew at least two, I felt.
I thought it was May seventeenth.
I was just going by the normal Sam, I could be wrong. For some reason, I, you know, the Friday board didn't very well, but I just thought it was. Oh, it was the seventeenth, you're right, because I, yeah, you're right. Seventeenth or twenty-second, you're right.
I got a red eye back, I was sixteen, so I.
Alright, alright.
The twenty-second does not work for me, I can do the seventeenth, but I don't want to be like a, I'm going to be seventeen, but then Sam says he's going to be, oh, twenty-second.
You guys are going to just have to keep it exciting, so I stay away, but we'll be fine.
You get a red one.
Alright, so we went with on this commitment. May, may seventeenth, who was just a Thursday.
It's six to eight-thirty.
Yes, six to eight-thirty. I'm doing three hours, two and a half, breaking that down just a little bit. Alright, very good. I'll be sure to let her fill that in the morning and thank you for that. I will call the date and send an invitation. Yes, this is all, the board will be there, and we'll be discussing. Alright, and at this time we're going to move on to facilities update. And I will just start by saying that on the twenty-fourth, that's actually tomorrow evening, starting at six-thirty till eight o'clock, we'll be having a community engagement meeting at Broadway Elementary. We'll be highlighting aspects of the safety in the schools and just really beginning with that, that we'll be looking back at feedback that we received at our former community engagement meeting. And then we'll also be talking about the facilities, particularly the K three and potentially K five configuration and discussion. And with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Fisk.
Okay, so just a very quick update, renovations. We have approved that package at nine. The process has already started as far as getting equipment ordered. I've had a couple of meetings with our supervisor and supervisor working on the stove. Dave and I have been working with our financial guy on financing, coming along well. Next big thing we'll be doing, we're having a kickoff meeting on Friday afternoon to look at some of the items we didn't have scope for, so the allowance items that were in the RFP, looking at bringing group people, their pricing on that, talking about security as well, it's called door fog or sensors, sheets for shatterproof, resistant type of stuff. So that happens on Friday this week. Next week, we're meeting with the window and door company, finalize that for the middle school. And part of that is establishing colors for curtain walls, that on the front of the building and right at that area. So that'll be taken next week. The goal is to get the orders placed ASAP so that we can get as much as possible completed by the end of summer. It's not going to be possible to get it all completed in the summer just because of where we're at right now. We've set a substantial completion date early fall, so I'm comfortable that most of this and all will be done early September, end of September timeframe. Some might travel into October, but we should be done by Friday, when we show up. Once we do get rolling, I'll provide a weekly update for that as well, so that you have some information of where we're at as far as that process is going. Any questions on that, renovations?
With the renovations continuing into September, possibly October, do not, do not plan any interruptions to the school day, but don't anticipate any though.
It'll all be second shift work and they will clean up after themselves as well. So when the kids, I studied this morning, they shouldn't notice that people were in the classroom. Anything else on renovations? Quick stadium update, I know you've seen my emails, but we have a hundred and sixty feet of wall that is before, initially a tiny wall, there's a hundred and twenty feet that's formed and ready to. that is before, the retaining wall, there's 120 feet that's formed and ready to be poured this week. Once again, mother nature is not a friend. We had concrete trucks set to ride this afternoon, and we had to scrap them. So right now, we're looking at concrete coming in again Wednesday and probably Thursday. Once that core gets done, there's about 80 to 90 feet left, and the wall will be completed. The plan is for the excavator to get in on site next week, each two to three weeks, and then once he finishes, notes arrives on site to do their part of the project, and then we'll finish the whole project up with fencing around the two end zones and on the visitor side. So while mother nature has not been friendly to us, I'm very comfortable with when we finish the entire project.
So the removal of the excavation, where are we taking that?
Right now, we don't anticipate having to remove much of anything at all. So when the crown comes off the field, field's gonna go to a monoslope from the visitor side to the home side, so the crown is gonna be kind of pushed towards the retaining wall. We've got backfill we have to do behind the retaining wall, we have backfill we have to do next to sidewalks that are going in the end. So right now, we're not anticipating having to remove much of anything at all.
Right.
We'll address that if we need to.
Okay, citizens' comments, we have none this evening. President's comments, I'm gonna defer, and if it's the time. So we will move on to approval of amendments. We got one set of minutes, our regular meeting minutes from March 9th.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Teresa and Corinne. Struggling a little bit? Any discussion?
I have one. And I don't, it's not necessarily a typo. Under Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Reports, A, Business Advisory Council High School Summer Job Fair, March 1st night, do you see the very end of the sentence? It says the job fair, and there were over zero students.
Nobody showed up. That's why I put it down.
No, I was just shocked. I wanted to make sure I was reading that right. Is that true?
No, I wanna, I'm trying to do recall how many students were there.
Is it a zero? No.
It ends in a zero.
It's fine. I was just like, maybe no one came, that's really sad. I didn't know.
Over zero.
It's a job fair at a high school?
Yes. Where there is a two or three days of relying on the 25th.
Right, right. I'd add a little back my own, but I'd say approximately 40.
Okay, that's fine. Because I was thinking if there were zero, maybe not do it next year, not affect... Call me a problem solver. That was my fault.
Good cat.
All right, so with that correction, update.
And that was my only point.
So that was Superintendent I, I'm just making that note.
Call Roper.
All right, Mrs. Dunaway?
Ah, yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spann?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
That motion is approved. And it's approved.
President's report.
I would like to present to you the president's report for March 2018. I'll make the motion approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second from Andy Joell. Discussion? Any other highlights today?
Just that this was the last week, we did receive our final tax revenues from the county auditor's office. That would be easy for the big jump we see for this month. Again, it is the last of the years, so we're relying on these revenues for the months of April, May, and June. If you go to the budget for actual report, the VDA section, just wanted to point out, you can see that the general property taxes, we actually collected more than we anticipated, and that was due to additional collections for delinquencies and for the increase of the tax valuation as we saw from last year to this year. And then another item of note, this utility personal property taxes are also a little higher than anticipated originally from the county auditor, due to construction of the infrastructure, electric, by typing input that was a public utilities. We are on track, if you, we're in the expenditures, if you take March, it's the ninth month out of fiscal year, if you take nine out of 12 months, that's 75%. We are shooting under, under 75% of all of our line items except for the other, but that includes our tax per out that we did at the beginning of the year, but it's large out there. The real big number to note is for personnel services and employee benefits, these are based on April. That's 19 out of 26 pay periods. 19 out of 26 is 73.01%. If you look there, we're at 72.7, 73.3. I think we're at where we need to be. So I'm, I'm really happy with the numbers we're seeing, and do you like to sustain us to meet our projected any cash balance, if not exceed the any cash balance due to fiscal... Word is not coming.
Fiscal strain.
Responsibility, yes, there you go. Fiscal strain. Our numbers are working well. I'm very excited to put together next year's budget and present that to you in the upcoming months. Next month, we will be presenting a higher year forecast. Something to look forward to. Any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, you call Roper please.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spann?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Next, I'd like to present to you the fiscal year 18 appropriation amendments. No, I am skipping the lease. Forgive me, pardon me. Next, we have the lease purchase resolution, approval of a lease purchase resolution authorizing the Board of Education to tip city accessibility order to enter into one or more ground lease agreements of school district land, and one or more lease purchase agreements to the Board of Education of the school district for the purpose of constructing, improving, furnishing, equipping school facilities, including constructing various energy conservation improvements to the school district buildings, and approving the execution of said ground lease agreements, lease purchase agreements, other documents relating thereto, and approving related matters. This is in regards to the renovations at the middle schools.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second, myself and Teresa. So the legal lease there with the motion is only compounded by the actual resolution that is in the document.
I apologize, I... I know.
Are there any questions?
For the financial...
No.
For the financial report to be approved?
Yes.
Can we recall who was the first and the second on those?
Wasn't it Andy Joell?
It was Andy Joell.
Thank you very much.
Again, any questions on the resolution? This basically authorizes the district to go borrow the money for the improvements that we're planning to do this summer. If non-legal lease.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, isn't that amazing? This was actually like the sixth round of the resolution. Gary and I have been going back and forth with the attorneys and the financing and the bank. Overall, we got a better rate than Frank and the empty Miami Valley CTC did by 110. We got 3.74, they got 3.75, so...
You know this is on camera, right? He's gonna...
That's fine. See if we do it better, right? We are looking to do a 20-year lease purchase agreement, and the lease purchase agreement does not count against our...
That was, that was the exciting part to me.
Yeah.
Very important. Very important. We call on that.
All right, looks like we're ready to call Roper.
Mr. Spann?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Now, I'd like to present to you the approval of the fiscal year 18 appropriation amendments.
How many are approved, guys?
I'll second.
Motion is second, Andy and Joell. Any comments?
What, what is THS Cheer doing?
They've got their cheer camps.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah, the summer cheer camp.
It's like, fancy outfits.
Those would be some bedazzled. That's a lot of money.
Where do they go to cheer camp at?
You've got me. Just the one big item to mention there is the permanent improvement voted levy fund to 03, you'll see that there's a 4.3 dollar increase. That is the levy, or the lease purchase. Any other questions?
Call Roper please.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spann?
Yes, that motion is approved.
And last, I'm pleased with the approval of the ORC 570541 purchase order certification then and now fiscal year 18 for March.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second, myself and Corinne. No questions?
David, what's NCCJ? Your session?
I'm gonna...
Oh, NCCJ, that's, that's a piece that they do for high school, and it's connected to the, I'd say, it's working with multi, multi-asset, multi-ethnic groups and acceptance.
So is it like a curriculum? Is it a speaker?
Or it's, a bit of both. It's instruction, it's training, education development, and then it is actually, yes, and then they have a complete team.
Is that like, that whole period stuff?
That typically takes place after school. We, NCCJ stands for, I mean, National Conference for Community Justice. It's a group that comes in and promotes cultural understanding, acceptance of different ethnic groups, different socioeconomic statuses. One of the things that we're working on for spring and carry over through the summer is training high school students who are interested in going out to middle school and working with sixth grade. We ran a couple programs called Babies of Change.
That's what I was wondering, just to tie your tape.
Yeah, one last spring, one this past fall. And so we've got a group of students who are engaged in that type of work, and so they're gonna be our group that we look at sending out to middle school and working out. We noticed a lot of, just one instance involving hate speech and things of that nature started last fall, and so this is a way that we want to be proactive, try and get out in front of some of that and eliminate some of that in our village.
It says session stage. How many does that include in, is this the only time we're gonna have to write this check?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's one and done. Okay.
Are there some outcome measures, like how you measure the success? Subjective, objective, heading?
What we hope is that we see a, increasing this one incidents that are occurring.
I believe we did this program last year as well.
We did.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Call Roper please.
Mr. Spann?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Yeah, no old business, I believe. Moving on to new business.
Item A, recommendation to Board to approve accept following designation as a Atlantic High School Science and Michael Neely, Assistant Junior varsity and varsity boys as approach.
I'll move. Second.
That motion is second. Discussion? Call Roper please.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spann?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item B, approval of non-reemployment for the 2018-19 school year, and that means intent not to reemploy the given following certified employees, that's Karen Rash and Miss Tannis.
The motion is second. I'll make the vote.
I'll second.
That motion is second from Andy and Joell. Discussion?
How long were each of these staff members with us?
Mrs., Ms., Ms. Rash has been here since Ms. McKenzie has been maternity leave, and that's been beyond 12 weeks, the shepherd that instituted she get wins, and Ms. Tannis has been here for the entire school year.
How, is this her, was last year her first year in the district?
First year, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Call Roper please.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spann?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item C, approval to employ the following as certified teachers on a limited contract for the 2018-19 school year, Penny Poppers Certification, capable Nicholas Albers, Amy Bailey, Bailey George, and Austin Hen. And we were able to meet all three, all four of those this evening.
Looking for a motion?
Go ahead.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Joell and a second from Andy. Any discussion, questions?
I have a question on the middle school math teacher. I think, how many finalists were there for that, or how many people did we interview for that position?
I was brought in on the second round on that, and I sat in on two votes, and there were, this round involved a team, actually a team of middle school teachers, both the industry. And I think that we, we had strong candidates at the end, and I think that, you know, sometimes if you're interviewing someone and you think, wow, that's the one, and then you interview the next one and you think, wow, this is even a better fit, and that's been one.
So we had three finalists? From the second round? Okay. Out of those three finalists, how many were seven, 12 certified?
Trying to remember. Maybe, oh, out of the, out of finalists?
Out of the three finalists, because...
He was the only one.
Right, right. That was my question.
Yeah.
So I was just curious why we only have, you know, one qualified seven, 12 person? So I didn't know if that was a recruiting issue, if we're not attending the right job fairs, or if we're attending the wrong job fairs. What kind of data do we keep on that? Certainly, we should have more than one candidate. I'm sorry, do I want what?
There's something going on with certification.
We didn't have, I mean, seven, 12 people apply.
Well, that was my question. Is it, is it a recruiting issue? Are we not going to the right places?
So it's really, even with us having openings at the high school, that we look for kind of funneling those, for the most part, to at that level. Being seven, 12, it does give the middle school boost, particularly if we're looking at higher level math.
Right.
And we think that that is probably going to increase.
Right.
So that's going to be a positive piece for middle school to have. But often, it is the 49 that we find applying to that middle school range. Part of that, I think, is that, oh, you're calling for that particular grade level and for the middle school student. But a good question, because I, I think in this particular case, it is going to be helpful to the middle school to have an additional personnel staff, Mr. Bonfis as the... Mr. Bonfis as the, uh, then...
He does celebrate, celebrate the job.
Yes, and he has the, the ability to have extension to the high school as well.
No, I, I like the idea of the seven through twelve, I just wish we would have had more than one qualified seven through twelve person. And then the other thing I worry about is nepotism. When you hire a teacher that has two family members working in the district, I just always have to really think hard about that if that's a great choice.
Right. So I, I did follow up on that. So this would not, in any way, fall in that category. It would be, uh, uh, whether it would be a parent or someone in that household would be evaluating. And, or overseeing that individual as the immediate administrative renter. And also the person that was submitting for hire and going upon the hiring process. Yeah.
Were, um, Austin and Kaylee, are they both seven-twelve?
Yes.
Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
No.
Mr. Spano?
Yes. That motion is approved.
All right, item D, uh, change in positions. Uh, this is a recommendation approval of, for following change in positions. I mean, uh, Heather Holmes going from demographic kindergarten teacher to demographic art teacher. Amy Brestow, that was here earlier. Uh, and, and so at, at LT Ball intermediate, fourth grade teacher, that is moving to the middle school as a language arts teacher. And Molly Sanders, uh, that's at LT Ball intermediate, a fifth grade teacher who's moving to the middle school as a science teacher.
I'll move.
Second.
That motion is second. Corinne and Teresa? Any discussion?
Um, Dr. Comp, how is that gonna work with, um, Amy is also gifted certified? How is that, is, right now they sort of split those?
Yeah. So, uh, she will not be, she will be able to have a cluster in her...
Okay.
For the class and will not have to take the usual hours right now.
Right.
Because that would state piece where they're taking thirty hours.
Right.
So she will not have to do that. It would be a nice benefit for the middle school and also allow for the flexibility in scheduling. So they don't have to be just in one particular section that you have your options of students and their schedules to be one of the courses they're going to take.
Right. I just think that she was like officially gifted certified, so I wasn't sure how that was going to be going down. Flexibility, isn't it?
Other questions? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item E, approval to change the two thousand seventeen eighteen supplemental contract status for Jim Johnson, who programmed volunteer for boys' baseball to assistant high school boys' baseball coach step five.
All right, call roll.
I'll second.
That motion is second. Andy and Corinne? Discussion?
I hear he does a fantastic job, so I was happy to see this.
Been assistant coach for a hundred years.
Yes, yes, everybody has nothing but great things to say about him.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item F, substitute, recommend approval of the following substitute positions for the remainder of the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. In proper certification and capable, uh, Carol Noxing as a substitute teacher today, and Amy Cross as a substitute maintenance.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
That motion is second from Teresa and Corinne. Discussion, questions?
These are great people that have been in the middle school and assisted us in prior years and, uh, we'll welcome them as eventually their needs come up.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Call...
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item G, approval of the following two thousand eighteen summer staff for the State Crafters Summer Camp. That's Carmella Adams.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
That motion is second. And so, Teresa?
Discussion, questions?
Uh, next month we will see an extended list of those that will be assisting and helping Mrs. Holmes.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item H, approval of the following summer maintenance project funded by the permanent improvement budget. Middle school gym floor refinishing, district carpet replacement, and district concrete work.
Is the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. That motion is second from Teresa and Andy. Discussion?
Thanks for keeping us on track, Gary. Always making our district.
What kind of concrete work are we doing, Gary?
Um, we do about ten, fifteen thousand dollars per year. So we look for sidewalks that might have dips or crack or trip hazards. We have one section of sidewalk that we need for a water main break that has to be replaced. So it's nothing, no actual, is your concrete work is just for fixing those areas that could be hazards and other areas that have to be fixed.
And are we doing any work in, in carpet replacement in the, broadly or, or...
Carpet replacement?
No, by the broad.
Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes. That motion is approved.
Item I, approval to increase student lunch prices by ten cents. That, so the kindergarten lunch will now be two dollars and sixty cents, and that's kindergarten from the fifth grade. And the sixth and twelfth will be two dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, that will be for the two thousand eighteen lunch price. Eighteen slash nineteen.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second for Joe Ellen and Corinne. Discussion, questions?
I would just say that, um, USD requires us to run a formula every year called the paid lunch equity, which basically compares our average price of lunches sold to what is the free reimbursement amount. And we are required by law to continually move our average price closer to the free reimbursement amount. Our free reimbursement amount this year was three dollars and twenty-nine cents for the free lunch. Our average lunch price was in the two fifty-five, two sixty range, so we're on the close to it. The problem is it's up to the movement target because the reimbursement rate increases. So we are required to raise our prices at least a nickel, um, and say no more than a dime. Last year we did raise it fifteen cents. And I was a little concerned about doing that, but we've actually seen our paid lunch, paid lunch numbers increase this year. So hopefully that will continue next year with this increase.
You say numbers increase, is that revenue increase or actual lunch service?
Yes. Oh.
Oh, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Um, call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item J, uh, math curriculum standards, adoption of math curriculum math standards for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
That motion is second from Andy and Corinne.
I question that a little bit. Ultimately, we adopted for multiple years, so that's the only thing that's, that maybe is newly revised. I think we need to adjust that representation a little bit. You know what I'm saying? It's not like it's just being adopted, adopted for one year.
Or does that mean it was revised in the seventeen eighteen school year? The books in this one?
Yes, it was revised, that was a revision, that was an update, adoption of...
But this is only a stopping for the eighteen nineteen school year.
So, uh, I, I, if the board could, I would like to...
Reword that?
Reword that. Adoption of the math curriculum revised.
Should be adoption of the revised mathematics curriculum math and standards. Need to add revised before mathematics.
Beginning of the, of the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year?
Yes.
Are there any administrators that were on the math curriculum committees here?
Uh, several that attended, I don't know if existed.
I would have been on...
Do you guys, did you address like the gap in, in the middle school to kind of make that stronger feeding up into the high school?
We looked at, obviously there is some, some things, some gaps going on there. As far as what, what we're seeing coming from eighth grade to ninth grade, I think some of that, um, I mean, Mr. Shudders can speak this as well, but I think some of that is just some of the turnover that's happened unfortunately in this position. And then also with some of the new state testing, I think that, I think that's kind of highlighted some of those gaps that we've seen first. So I think we've been able to identify those and hopefully with the Go Math, that, that'll help shore that up in eighth. And then we're hoping with the intensified algebra that we're gonna build that foundation like Mr. Dooley talked about, we talked a lot about that.
That'll be like the bridge until you can...
Yeah. So we do, I mean, we looked long and hard at the Algebra One and the Core Supports in our, in our nine-to-twelve group and looked at how we can shore that up.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, why is math curriculum late again this year? Isn't it usually March? It seems like every year we're always late on curriculum.
We, we all, sometimes we have March, April, or we have April, May.
Okay.
And sometimes it depends on, for example, if you're on a ballot, something of that nature with your mom, which is...
Okay.
So, um, I think they just need a little more time.
Okay. Well, when did we go from one, for the curriculum committee, when did we go from one teacher per building to one teacher per grade? When did that happen? When did that change occur?
Actually, that's, that's been a while, uh, two years, three years? I'd say technology, I'd say at least five years.
When you were doing credit?
Okay, I didn't know that.
Usually one per grade would still be multiple, more than one in the building. They often then will have someone that is another person that was working at the grade level when they go back to the grade level.
Right.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, if it's always late, do we have enough people? Do we have the wrong people? Do we need different people? I wanted to make sure. When do you reevaluate the committee structure?
Right. Usually they are the necessary person. And they usually have the information and cash for math. And so usually they are the right person.
Okay.
You know, um, so I would think, I think, I think we are still right on. Because we're not able to make our order once we have our interview and finalizing.
Right.
That not happening till after July first.
Okay.
And so we, we should always wrap it before they leave. If, I think it's more difficult if it would be a June meeting and then we have to bring these people back.
Yeah.
Then that would be more difficult in a summer session. But as long as we make it by the meeting, we're still on target. Would you like to see it early, do you prefer that?
Well, I remember last year we were late and we were in jeopardy of not ordering our materials on time. And I couldn't remember what board meeting we approved that in. And I didn't have time to look through my eight feet of notes, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were at our target.
Yeah, we should be fine.
Any other stuff? Call roll, please.
Now, we've revised it, we need to restart.
Do you want to restate the motion?
Yes, I think that would be good.
Yeah.
How do you restate this?
I have adoption of revised mathematics curriculum math and standards beginning with the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
Who made the motion?
That was...
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Who made the second? Is that acceptable?
Thank you for that.
Okay.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item K, approval of payment for the following staff members for the worship outfit for seventeen eighteen school year. That calls Reese Cobal, um, Gabrielle Anderson, Jennifer Brown, Patty Cahill, Deb Betters, April R. Taylor, and Molly Sanders.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
That motion is second, and so will Corinne. Any questions?
So this is support what we call our LPDC, which is the Local Transportation Development Committee. And that committee really has quite their responsibility because they, uh, bring in the information submitted from all of our certified teaching staff on the rotation when the license is up. And then they do the finalization for the preparations to submit or renew the license. And so they actually approve whether it's ready for that next day, stage, and ready to submit to the state.
Hearing no questions, please call roll.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item L, approval to remove class rank from transcripts beginning next school year and recognize students in a Latin honor system based on an unwavering GPA instead of outperforming and succeeding.
I'll move. Second.
Um, I am excited about this. I think Mr. Beerhoff did an excellent job covering all the, the details, even, um, the different rationales for, for all the reasons that we're doing this. And I was speaking with Sean Falkowski, I think his daughter is a sophomore here. And, um, he was just, he's a professor at U D. And he was going on and on about how this makes so much sense from where he sits in the, I think he said, in the camp engineering department. They don't even look at rank at all. He said, you know, they really look at what students are taking, um, the grades that they're getting, if they're challenging themselves. And so I really think that this aligns with what we're trying to do here by, you know, providing education with that manner to tailor to every student. I think this is just a great continuation of that.
I do.
Yeah, thank you for all the hard work. That was a lot of hours, a lot of, it, it shows leadership. So, thank you.
I would echo that, just saying, that's a good picture for members. And thank you for engaging the community. Get ready for every other major.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Vent, Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Your last, Mr. Venters?
Yes.
How many stood by?
That motion is approved.
Item M, graduation class of two thousand eighteen. Approval of one hundred and eighty-eight graduates for the graduation class of two thousand eighteen. Subject to successful completion of all requirements before graduation and fulfillment of all obligations. The seniors' last exam day will be May twenty-third. Seniors will be exempt from school on May twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second from Joe Ellen and Corinne. Any discussion?
Well, one, I congratulate our seniors. This is exciting. Uh, two, you'll see that with that attendance, the full class list, all the names.
Sure is. So if there's any seniors who want to come check the list at the end, there's some in the paper, too.
This is an important stat.
This is how you get out.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item N, approval of permission to contract transportation to Troy Christian Schools for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Troy Christian will provide transportation for students enrolled at Troy Christian School, but reside within the city and send to the school district.
I'll move. Second.
That motion is second. Corinne and Teresa? Any discussion? Corinne and Teresa, any discussion?
Uh, we're presently doing this for this school year and haven't passed, and it works well.
Yep, it sure does.
Is this permission, it's an oddly worded notion, because it's a permission to contract, but it's not the contract itself. But we need our permission to allocate or comp.
To set for, to, to arrange transportation in that manner.
Call roll please.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item O, approval of permission to contract transportation with senior assistants incorporated for the 2018-19 school year. Senior assistants incorporated will provide transportation to and from the Ohio State School through the line in Columbus, Ohio, for one of our students, for one student.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second from Joe Ellen. Any questions or discussion on this one?
We presently use this service and it's real.
Call roll please.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item P, approval of premier occupational health in Troy, Ohio, as the agent for driver, driver physicals and drug alcohol tests in the 2018-19 school year.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second, myself and Corinne, any questions or discussion?
Just the everything for bus drivers to van drivers, hopefully setting up like...
Call roll please.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item Q, approval of the newly revised related policies and guidelines as discussed at the March nineteenth, 2018, board meeting. Nineteen nineteen.
Make the motion.
Second.
So these are the board policies, we've got two meetings we have. And this is the second meeting, second reading. Any questions, discussion? Call roll please.
Mr. Venters? I'll say yes, it was Sam's question. Oh, was it?
Yeah.
I believe it was.
Sam and I.
Gotcha. This is, Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item R, approval of the following overnight and out of stage trip. That's the high school quiz team for May twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh, 2018.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, Corinne and Joe Ellen, any discussion?
Is this something that they had like qualified to make? How awesome is that? That's really cool. Yeah. Oh, make it go every year?
Then most of the way there.
Most years they make it, yes. Yes, national gym, yeah, nine to twelve.
We hope to have them on the agenda for our meeting, should be the students.
Yeah, that would be great.
Call roll please.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item S, grant approval, approval to accept four thousand and eighty-four dollars in grant dollars for the Tipp Foundation.
I'll second. Any questions?
Just a, a comment that this is for Tipp in the middle school, and this is Google explanation kits, which have for reality goggles.
Didn't we just approve some goggles, please?
It was the same one, it, they were expensive, so they had a couple different people chip in. So it's going to require probably three plus grants to get it fully funded amount, yeah.
I think they're currently at a class of like three or...
Makes sense. We have the, was, was the educational down, approved the last, right, or the yours last one? Any other questions or comments? Call roll please.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Motion is approved. All right, that concludes new business, upcoming meetings, next Monday with a tri-agency meeting. Uh, that will be at the Road Township Building at six PM. That will be in the chambers, not in the basement of the building. Uh, we had our next workshop on the... On the seventeenth, May seventeen.
You say tomorrow, right?
And that's for, for our strategic planning. And the next regular meeting will take place on Monday, May twenty-first. And then a reminder, we have commencement for class of twenty eighteen on Saturday, May twenty-sixth at seven PM. All right. Executive session. Need a motion to adjourn the executive session for purposes authorized under Board of Education Policy Zero One Six Six, Ohio Revised Code One Twenty-One dot Twenty-Two G One. Consider the appointment, employment dismissal, and discipline promotion to motion or compensation of a public employee or official.
Second.
A motion and a second. I anticipate, uh, no, uh, action at this time from the board. Uh, we will recess for about, uh, five minutes. And then, uh, we will reconvene, executive session.
In here?
You want to do it in here?
Okay. Sure.
All right. So we'll recess for five minutes.
We got a vote.
Oh!
All right. Mrs. Heatherly?
Call roll.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?